Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting the Pine Top Lakeside Council to order. We do have a quorum. Please make sure that your cell phones are silenced. And I'd ask that you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, and with the faithful who wear the green and just as one.
Pastor Jurgens?
It's an honor to be here and to be asked. We pray. Lord God, heavenly Father, we thank you for your grace and mercy you give us, especially with the season of Thanksgiving. As Americans, you have given us so many blessings that we are thankful and should be every day. We also thank you for the, for the power and authority that you've given to the civil governments to rule the people. Bless this meeting. Give them your wisdom so that they decide decisions what is best for the people and the property of Pine Top and Lakeside. We pray in our Savior's holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Item B on our agenda is called to the public. This is a business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up in Call to the Public is limited by the open meeting law. The council may direct staff to study the matter for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda will not be heard during Call to the Public and individuals are moved into three minutes. I've got a couple of requests. We'll first start out with Jim Beck.
Mayor, Council, Manager, Alexander Hamilton Church, the idea of an engaged citizenry in governance. He called for active participation. Hamilton consistently reminded citizens of their role in shaping public policy and holding leaders accountable. I would urge concerned citizens to start paying attention, or here's what will happen. Last year, the town went from a $2 million surplus to 1.7 million in overspending. Thanks to some of our council members, the overspending has ended. Our town manager and financial director recently resigned, making a quick exit once they discovered certain public records were being reviewed. Johnson and Rodolph knew those records would incriminate them. For instance, manager Johnson withdrew funds from budgeted town accounts and transferred them into petty cash. He then wrote a check in his name and cashed it. When questioned, he stated he was giving cash bonuses to town employees. This went on for three years. $15,000 the first year, $16,800 the second and third years. A total of $48,600. Who exactly is guarding the hen house here? Some employees received cash, others said they had not. We know there was no paper trail when dealing in cash, no accounting for those lost funds. No money was returned. There was no charges filed against the two. And both were paid for their vacation and sick time after they left. As if that wasn't enough, at least 21 town employees were given town credit cards. It was found that Public Works Director spent $3,000 using the credit card to pay for a professional subscription to ChatGPT. $30,000 for a semi truck and $32,000 for a new engine. The operations director spent $4,000 for hunting backpacks for his employees. Another employee bought a personal cellphone for $1,200, $130 for insurance, $150 for accessories. He purchased $500 for Nike polar shirts for himself and $189 for those shirts to be embroidered. And $200 to buy breakfast burritos for his workers. Is there no shame? Some of these inappropriate expenses were in violation of the Arizona State Procurement Code. Isn't it curious that the town quickly fired a previous town manager when she alerted the town that they were violating the state's procurement code? President Reagan once said, "The buck stops here."
Thank you. Susan Denton?
To the council, I've been worrying about a letter I received from the town concerning a trailer parked in front of my house. It was apparently there longer than 72 hours. And according to town code, I needed to move it to the back or side of my house. One of my thoughts was, how familiar with town code do I need to be? Am I inadvertently noncompliant with, in other areas? Another worry was, do I need to tell my neighbors to move their trailers, et cetera, to the side or back of their lots? Did they get letters also? Another worry is, is this harassment of a town council member through his mother-in-law? What I think now is that I need to be more involved in town meetings and pay attention and not leave things to others to decide for me. So I would encourage everyone to come to meetings, ask questions about the things you see around town. One question I have is, what was the reason for cutting trees at the park and planting new ones, for example? Not against that, I just don't know what the reasoning was. And thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I appreciate your efforts to make this town one in which everyone would like to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. I have no other requests to speak during Call to the Public unless somebody else wants to talk. Okay, we'll move on then to item C, which is our consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion to the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion. Council members may ask questions without removal of the items from the consent agenda, and items removed are considered in their normal sequence. We've got two items in our consent agenda tonight. Are there any questions from the council on these? I would entertain a motion. Vice Mayor?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
A second, Ted.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D is business before the council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1 is presentation of the October 2025 financial report. We have Sarah Symington with us tonight. Sarah, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, your October 2025 monthly financial report is in your packet. We'll go through a couple of slides here and answer any questions the council may have. Looking first at our revenue for the general fund specifically. October year-to-date, we were at $2.2,858,971, which is about 30.14% if I include the contingency that we have in there. If I remove that out, we're about 35.36% collected for the annual year. TPT collections make up about 2.1% of that. And then we have other taxes of 673,000. And then non-tax related revenues are about 97,000 for year-to-date. Specifically looking at TPT across all funds, we are down about 1.7% year-to-date from the previous year. I'm saying that, though, with some good news. Our October actual numbers came in about 7.1% higher than this time last year. So we are starting to crawl back some of the things that we saw earlier in this fiscal year. And we're actually over our collections for the month of October. With that, though, the biggest drivers of that year-to-date number being down is really in our construction revenue, construction tax of 45.6%. And then our commercial rental is also down by 33.1%.
Sarah, has anybody really looked into the commercial rentals a little bit more? Because I find that intriguing. I don't see any more vacancies than there were a year ago, unless somebody else is noticing something I'm missing.
So unfortunately, we do not have access to see it. It's something that the town puts together and then hands it over to us. We'd be happy to look into that a little bit more with Stacy and her help and things like that to be able to kind of give a little bit more flavor of that.
Kind of like to investigate that a little bit. It just seems like a pretty dramatic decrease.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Sarah.
You can definitely do that. Looking at our expenditures for October year-to-date. While we're 33% of the way through the year, general fund expenditures are 27.6% of budget. So again, that's a real testament to the organization, the departments really trying to manage their costs and doing a good job at that. We do have a few departments that are over that 33% target. Those are all driven based off of timing of purchases that we've spoken about in the past several months of our report out. I'll just touch on a few of them here just to kind of reset the ground rules, our ground. Magistrate is up. Again, that's driven based off of the annual Navajo County contract that we pay at the beginning of the year. Fleet maintenance is also up over that 33% target. And that's driven based off of the equipment and repair maintenance costs that we saw at the beginning of the year. Town council is also over that kind of target amount of 33%. And that's due to the dues and subscription fees that are due at the beginning of the year. And then library is due to the timing of the purchases of our material costs. And then finally, looking at our expenditures of how they're broken out, we've got 72% is related to personnel. Managerial is 20%, and then operations is 7.5, and training is a small portion of about half a percent. Looking at our other expenditures by fund. So while we're only about 5.4% spent year-to-date through October, most of that's driven based off of the fact that we have a very large budget for our grants to be able to make sure that we've captured anything that might come to fruition on our grants. And we do have a few departments or funds that are over that 33% target. And that, again, is streets and parks. I will mention on both of those, though, it's something that we know about. We have a very large, we do a lot of work in the first four months of the year. And then we start to slow down as we get into the winter season. And so that's to be expected here. And that'll kind of slowly go back into getting in more in line with how we are from a year perspective. And then finally, looking at our fund balance trend analysis. Our general fund cash as of October was just under $1.3 million. It is down slightly from September by about 181,000 and then down year-over-year by 2.8. And then looking at our projected year-end general fund balance based off of the revised budget and what we've planned to go forward with, we're looking at about $1.4 million of fund balance in the general fund. And this represents about two months' worth of expenditures. So it sets us up really well for future years as we try to go into next year as well. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Counsel Farno.
Moving back a couple pages. There was, like, you know, the departments that have a red light. We've overspent due to something that needed to happen at the beginning of the year. Looking at previous year's track records and their month-to-month averages, will those fall back into line naturally or without unexpected things?
Absolutely. That's a great question. But yes, it is really, they're trending basically very similar to how they have in the past. Most of those are driven based off of the fact that we, they're either very small budgets, so very minor things can make it be flagged as red or yellow. But a lot of it has to do with the fact that we spend more in the first four months of the year, and this is looking at more of like an annualized basis. And so while they're trending that higher, it'll start to slow down a little bit as we get into those winter months.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Appreciate your work, Sarah. We'll move on then to... You need to fill out a request. You can come up and speak and then fill out a form. Go ahead. Come on up, Simon. That's okay.
Simon Riske, I'm the owner of the Bass Western in Pine Top and the Great Tree and Suites. I'm curious about your stats. Do you guys have, where do you get the information? And having hands-on on the tourism and hotels, how do you see that October, we did better this year than last year when the numbers are worse? And with the same thing with restaurants and bars? I'm just curious where the numbers coming from.
So are you referring to specific types, sources of taxes or overall? Sarah?
So we're looking at our tax revenue coming from the state of Arizona. So we get our information from the state of Arizona. And it breaks out that categorization for us in that system.
And they are also delayed because what you are showing at your hotels in October, we don't get until December? So our numbers are skewed a little bit.
Good. Thank you.
Good question, though, Simon. Thank you for asking that. Always good to know that we are definitely behind. Okay, anything else? We'll move on then to item D2, which is information discussion and possible legal action regarding the unauthorized expenditures of $78,895.56 AB basalt purchased from Perkins centers for the Top of the Woods paving project between June 24th and September 4th of 2025. Melina?
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. As always, a pleasure to be here this evening. I don't want to say unfortunately, but I think this is, this is something that we're bringing to you as we have continued to, to look at some of the things that have been done previously in efforts to try to correct those, those tasks that, and purchases that maybe did not, well, not maybe, they did not fall under the purchase policy. It was brought to our attention that the purchase of the AB for the Top of the Woods project did go over, while it was not a one-time purchase, it was over the few months beginning in June. And that did go over totaling $50,000, as you're aware, that we did complete that project as far as the paving. We still have a few cleanup items to do. This is something that I have committed to Christie to continue to work on, making sure that these things do not happen in the future. That we are, we are tracking these, not only in our ShareNet, which is our, our program, we call it ShareNet or Novo Solutions. It tracks our service requests and projects. We're going to be utilizing that and really hammering home the importance of getting that information in and tracking that ahead of time. And I'll be bringing here in the near future some more information about projects. But we bring this to you tonight to, to correct a mistake that was made. But full transparency, we are working together to ensure that these, these items do not happen again. And I will be working with our staff at Public Works to ensure that we, we tighten up on our purchases and that we make sure that we're following our purchase policies to the letter.
Thank you, Melina. Does anybody have questions? Go ahead, Counsel Smith.
I'd like to just clarify something that, because in your narrative and in the motion, it says that we started, we have a total cost of $78,895.56, and we've paid $68,558.78. I assume those are correct. It says the remaining balance is $10,221.72, but that's not subtracted correctly. Should be $10,336.78.
I can answer that question.
Go ahead, Ms.
I found out later, after I put the numbers in there, that there was a credit from Perkins, a small credit. They had charged us the wrong price for a load that should have been under the Navajo County contract, so there was a small credit.
So you should change the motion.
You can change the motion.
You know, to correct that, I guess.
Absolutely.
Would you like to make that motion? Any other questions or comments? Counselor Smith, go ahead.
Yeah, the recommended motion is, I move to approve the retroactive expenditure of $78,895.56 for the purchase of Class 6 Basalt AB from Perkins Centers acquired under Navajo County Contract and used for sub-base construction on six roads within the Top of the Woods subdivision and to authorize the remaining payment of...
That remaining payment is correct.
It is correct.
Yeah.
The $10,221.72 with an added credit.
No, that's...
That credit is in there.
The incorrect amount is the $78,000. We've paid $68,000. The remaining balance is $10,221. If you add those two together, does it equal the $78,895? So just make the motion as stated, and it will be correct.
Okay. Then it's done.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you. Counsel Phillips. We have a motion, a second, as a further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Melina. Appreciate your work and your efforts to make sure we're doing better.
My pleasure.
Item D3 is Town Council Committee Liaison and Interim Town Manager Monthly Reports. I will start with Counsel Farno.
Had a great conversation with Steve Dobbs, the president of Trax. We just went over the recap of kind of the year's worth of work that Trax has accomplished, which has been monumental, in my, my opinion. They, I remember back a year ago that Trax thought they were going to have a, a lot of hurdles to getting work done this year. But, and maybe they did, but they still, either they overcame them or they redirected. But they finished their year with our trails in the best condition that I can ever remember them. And so we talked about that a little bit. They, they have overcome their map challenges as far as the mapping and tech side of it. They are still looking for some community funding support to fund those maps, which if anybody knows somebody they want to reach out to there, those maps are in restaurants, hotels, every place that the mountain has, and they're, they're a real asset to all communities here. And so, you know, they are looking for some help on, on the funding of the maps. But, but otherwise, they finished their year and, and had a very successful year.
Thank you. Counsel Smith?
Yes. We're having, we'll have a meeting coming up on the Transit Authority at our next meeting. And that was at the request of council when we discussed the possibility of eliminating that service to the citizens of the town. And we finally decided, no, that's a, not, not, we're not going to take that away. So we're having Lisa Robertson come in at the next meeting. And she will give us a briefing on all the dollars amounts and the percentages of each of the categories of expenditures and revenues that are a little complicated. But it's good for the council to know all of that information. So that's coming up. And Arizona Alpine Trail, we're looking to have probably our grand opening this spring. We've completed, completed the trail. We have support from the Arizona Office of Tourism and the Arizona Office of Outdoor Recreation. Hope to have them up here. I'll ask the governor if she'll come or not. But we'll try to have some kind of a grand opening when the trail opens in maybe March or April, something like that. So we're finishing up our master plan, and that should be done in that same timeframe.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Let me just report quickly on the museum and the Pine Top Lakeside Historical Society. The museum is actually closed for the winter. However, there's a committee working on changing the displays in there and actually putting in electronic displays, too, about the history of our community here. So it should be good. And we have two former council members from the past who are actually on that committee helping with those things. Last night, I attended, and we had some others from the town, attended Hello Dolly's Harmonia Dinner and Performance fundraiser at Blue Ridge High School. The theater, Blue Ridge High School Theater, were doing a fundraiser, and it was very successful. As you know, in those fundraisers, desserts go for very, very high prices, and they did there at the high school as well. So, but excellent. And if you've been to their performances lately, they are excellent. And I just put that out because Hello Dolly will be presented in February by Blue Ridge. Also, I attended the Light the World kickoff on Tuesday. And I bring that up in with, with Blue Ridge as well, with the school, because one of the performers, or one of the groups that performed there was from our elementary school here at Blue Ridge, the Jacket Jam Blue Ridge Sixth Grade Choir. Staying there and did an excellent job under the direction of Jen Olson. But Light the World is, if you don't know about that, it's in Shola at the Meadows. And will be going from November 18th through December 2nd. Again, there's, there are local, there are five local and state charities that are represented there. It's a giving machine where you go and instead of, like a vending machine, instead of getting out chips or soda, you actually put in a credit card and, and you can donate to help people. And it's, there's things all over the world. I mean, you can donate for a kid to go to school, for school lunches, for, for a family in Africa to have water so they can water their crops, things, all kinds of things like that. You can buy a goat for a family somewhere. But there are also local, and the local one closest to us here is the White Mountain Coalition Against Homelessness is one of them that you can donate there, too. So I would encourage you to, to look at that again. That's through December 2nd. That's all.
Thank you. Counsel Heiser?
Mayor, I have nothing to report, though I am upset I missed the live auction for desserts.
Counsel Phillips?
Humane Society, they just almost completed their install of their new backup generator system. They've got a new cat house they're building and working on getting the new air conditioning heating system installed. Hopefully, it'll be done in the next... Hopefully it'll be done the next, I think the whole project will be done in the next couple of months. And they're working on doing some remodel stuff at the Dog House thrift store, so.
Thank you. Counsel Turner?
The Chamber of Commerce, right now they're going through elections for their Board of Directors. I think they close out their elections tomorrow night. They're going to announce the new board at their monthly meeting on December 2nd, and these new board members will take their jobs on January 1st. The board did elect Mike Mothambyer to be the president for one more year. It's one of those things where once you get there, it's kind of hard to find a replacement, but Mike's doing a great job, and I couldn't think of a better person on the board to be our president. Now, the Chamber's rolling out a new phone app, and I'm laughing here because I know enough about this to get myself in a lot of trouble with the techies in the room, but there's going to be a new app that's supposed to make it easier for communication with the members, communication with the town, and businesses outside of our community. And if I start talking any longer than that, you're going to realize how little I know about tech and social media. So I'm going to move right to the community center. The mayor and most of the council members served lunch today, liver and onions, yum, and meatloaf, and they will be serving lunch again, I don't know who exactly, next Wednesday, Wednesday before Thanksgiving. The community center, they've been working with the United Food Bank, and there's going to be 2,000 pounds of food and Thanksgiving boxes that are going to be distributed next Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving, between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. These meals are free, and you don't have to be over 60. Everyone's welcome because they have a sponsored bushes as sponsoring Thanksgiving dinner for our town. So come by, and you'll see some of us serving lunch and some of us handing out boxes of The community center, a lot of folks lost their SNAP benefits, Supplemental Nutrition Program, and it's been tough on a lot of our citizens. The community center's distributed 12,000 pounds of food to these folks in the last month, and I just think that's amazing. Think about it, you got to find donors, and you have to carry the food into the community center, and then you have to carry it out or hand it to people, and it was a huge effort. That's all we've got.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Turner. I just have a couple of things to add, and then I'll let Kristi take over. I sit on the Executive Committee of the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, and the Executive Director, Tom Belshi, announced his retirement effective December 31st. So we have been in a very similar process to what the town has been going through to select a new executive director, and I believe they're in final negotiations with an individual to take over that position, somebody internal, and so I think it's going to be a very smooth transition. So we'll look forward to that final announcement coming out. The other thing, I'm just going to have a little latitude, and, you know, we live in a wonderful place, and it's a special time of year for everybody, and I think it kind of, we all get a little sentimental this time of year, at least I do. So I just want everybody to remember that, you know, we have our ups and downs and our bumps and hills and valleys, but when you really think about it, we are so very blessed to live where we do, in this beautiful community, where people are willing to step up, as Counselor Turner said, and feed those in need. We have our freedoms, we may not necessarily all agree politically, locally, statewide, nationally, but I would just ask everybody to count your blessings and remember those that are less fortunate. We've had a lot of tragedy in our communities this year, collectively, individually, so I just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I look forward to seeing where we go from there. So Kristi, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I first want to say thanks to all the citizens that showed up tonight, because this is probably one of the best crowds we've had in a while, and I think it's important, as I give this presentation, or just to report on, so you'll kind of know what all of our, what our different departments within the town are doing. I have a few pictures I'm going to share with you because they're more exciting to look at than me, so. I'm going to start with the police department. This first picture is at the Harvest Fund Fest that was put on in partnership with the town, but I think the majority of the work was done by friends of the library, and Priscilla De La Garza from the police department manned this station. I think her husband Eric De La Garza helped, and it was a huge success, so they have a, I believe it was a target game and then a harvest truck for photos, and that was really popular, and I think Priscilla did a great job, so thank you, Priscilla, for that. A private donation, let me go to the next page. This is Officer Gaunet and our new K-9 ARCO. A private donation was made by a citizen to support the police department in acquiring the training and our K-9 ARCO, as you see here. On October 20th, Officer Gaunet and K-9 ARCO began a rigorous eight-week training program together, and they're both doing great. This, I'm just kind of showing these pictures because on the report last month, I talked about Dan Barnes building some housing for the cameras that are in the gel cells, and this is the housing that he mounted with some of the housing, I guess a box that he built for it. I just wanted to share that with everybody because appreciate him taking the extra effort to do that. And this is one of the benches, he built two of these benches, and that is in the holding cell area, and there's, you can't see it, but there's little grumets on the end of those that handcuffs, they can handcuff people to while they're doing intake. I think that's all I have for PD pictures, so I'm going to leave that one up there while I give a few more updates on the PD. The month of October, the PD assisted with Epic Rides Mountain Bike Race, the Timber Mesa Fire Department Memorial Procession, and the Blue Ridge Elementary School Halloween Event. I think that our VIPs were out there helping with that as well. Several officers have attended special trainings in October. VIPs were trained on first aid, CPR, and the use of an AED. The town, the police department sends out a spider tech survey every time there's a call for service. There's been a total of 993 surveys sent and a 20% completion rate. Our satisfaction rate is 4.81 out of 5, with 5 being extremely satisfied. Detective Bunch continues to stay very busy with numerous calls and trainings, and I wanted to let you know that Detective Bunch got two kudos in one day, both for receiving some important grant awards for the town, for the police department. Another kudos to Priscilla De La Garza. She's doing an amazing job and some inspiring work as she's helping to obtain donations for the sirens and sleigh bells. She's doing a lot of work on that. A few patrol statistics for you. The incident calls in October, total 656 calls. Accidents, 11. Misdemeanor and felony arrests at 34, and total citations at 35. I'm going to move on to the library. I don't have pictures for them, I apologize, but on the back table, I do have a November and December calendar to share with all the great events that Betsy and her staff put on at the library. They have book club, they have cookbook club that I heard has been a really big success. They did their first one and had a really good success with that. They do chair yoga, baby time, story time, adult art, just to name a few. So if you're interested, what's going on at our library, there's some calendars in the back. The library did implement some new hours, starting November 1st, they're open 8:30 to 5:00. Staff arrives at 8:00 to get the day prepared at the library, and so far the citizens have received that change well. So they're on, now on the same hours as the rest of the town administrative offices, which is nice. All right, I'm going to move on to Public Works. I want to thank, first of all, Frank Neronho, Lisa Mears, and Clay Reedhead for stepping up while Director Spillman was out of town for family business. They did a great job keeping me updated over here on what they were doing for projects. I just wanted to show this so the citizens know what this is that they see over at Mountain Meadow Park. This is the water tank that the town installed. They got a grant for that water tank. It's not full yet, they still have to install some wiring and a pump that will come at a later date, but that is what you see over at Mountain Meadow Park. This picture doesn't do it justice, it's big, so if you have a chance to go see it, go see it, it's really cool. Director Spillman completed an MOU for Blue Ridge Unified School District for the basketball league we do this yearly, and that was just completed this month. The curbing project and ADA path at Mountain Meadow Park, this is just a little bit of the curbing that you see here. I ran by and took some pictures. They're not great, but just so you can see what they've been working on over at Mountain Meadow Park, this job is completed. This is a parking lot that Frank Neronho and his crew have been working on. Right now it is millings, but this will be paved at a later date when we can put it into our budget. So this is right next to the basketball court at Mountain Meadow, which is going to give us a lot more parking over there for events, and it looks great. This is a sensor that is in a crosswalk at Mountain Meadow Park. I thought this was really neat, I didn't even know we had done this, and this is another, it's really hard to see this picture, but when you walk through that sensor, it beeps and flashes, which is the crosswalk right next to Woodland Part, wait, Woodland Road, right? Woodland Road and the entrance to Mountain Meadow, that's a really neat feature that we have there, a safety feature, and I wanted to show you guys a picture of that if you haven't seen it. Let's see, the Public Works Department also helped with the Fall Fun Festival. Kathy Penrod sent me numerous emails to several staff members, Annie De Rosier, Melina Spillman, Priscilla De La Garza, and it's a great reminder that building relationships with organizations are so important to our small town. The Clerk Department, McKenzie's been working on election packets for 2026 because that's rapidly approaching. We are currently preparing for a home rule education for the 2026 election, and we're going to try to do our best to get as much education out there on that as possible, it's very important to the town. Planning and zoning has two vacancies, and McKenzie has posted those vacancies on the town website, the post offices, and it's been in Talk of the Town. With that said, I wanted to thank Chairman Jack Pence, who recently stepped down, Tim Kinzlik, who was the vice chair, also stepped down. They had years of dedicated service, and we certainly appreciate them for that. Jack Pence is moving to Payson, so he will be missed, and Tim Kinzlik just wants to enjoy traveling right now. Planning and zoning meeting for November 27th is canceled because it's Thanksgiving. The next meeting will be held on December 11th. At that meeting, we plan to, within what we have already on the commission, is to appoint a new chair and vice chair. We have enough people for a quorum as long as all of our commissioners show up, but we will be looking for more commissioners. MIAC is still doing their blanket and stuffed animal drive for sirens and sleigh bells. The drop-off locations are Town Hall, Blue Ridge High School, Junior High, and Elementary School. I also wanted to thank McKenzie for stepping up to help with minutes and agendas as I've been busy with some other town business, and I really appreciate that. Community development will have coming forward pretty soon. I think it will be at the December 11th commission meeting. There's a House Bill 2247 that's going to amend Title 16 of our town code, and that is, it changes the administrative review of subdivision plots without a public hearing. So we'll be implementing that in December. Community services, I don't think I have any more pictures. I don't, so we can take, I'll just leave that up. I wanted to remind you guys that the mayor's tree lighting is December 5th at Jack Barker Park from 5:30 to 8:00. There's going to be a Santa's Workshop December 9th from 2:00 to 4:30 at the White Mountain Nature Center, and that is for kids 10 and under. Coffee with Council will be held on December 9th at 11 o'clock at Pine Top Coffee. If you don't know what that is, it's a forum for citizens to come and have conversations with your elected officials. So if you want to come in and have conversations with your elected officials, December 9th at Pine Top Coffee, we've been having some good participation there, and it's a good thing. The community services director job description has been posted, and we have two internal applicants so far. It has been posted internally and externally. We're going to leave that open until full, but definitely until at least after Thanksgiving, and if we have more applications, we'll start scheduling interviews for that. That'll take a little bit off of Annie's plate. Annie is starting on a shop local campaign. Just a reminder that, how important it is to shop local for all of our small businesses we have in town. I think when tourism is down, they struggle, so please shop locals, visit the local coffee shops and restaurants, it means a great deal to them. The visit social media post between Instagram and Facebook has had 1.1 million views for the town. What attracted most of those views was the fall colors, that was then noticed by April Warnakey of Channel 3. She prompted, that prompted an interview with Mayor Irwin, and that was featured on AZ Family 3. So hopefully we get some visitors to the White Mountain from that. The Finance Department is continuing to monitor town financials closely and working on the annual audit. I completed an MOU with Blue Ridge Unified School District for the Teacher Just Project. It's been reviewed by the superintendent, Roloff, and the Blue Ridge District Attorney. I'm just, that's been, they've been, it's approved, so I'm just waiting for that to return to me, and then I will sign it. And that is for the town doing in-kind work on a new town that the town named Gobby Lane, I believe, that is the ingress egress of some teacher housing, affordable housing that's back behind the Old Love Kitchen, I believe is what that was. I hired an HR consultant with a very fair price, actually a very generous price, for the town to come in and have one-on-one conversations with employees in private and confidential. I'm hoping that we'll get a follow-up report that will help guide us through a difficult time of turnover and help us rebuild even stronger. I want to thank Stacy McArthur, Commander Wilkie, and Annie De Rosier for the effort they continue to put into the town manager hiring process. I had a meeting, I attended a meeting at Snowflake yesterday with the other mayors, or sorry, managers from surrounding cities and towns, and I wanted to let you know it was a great visit. It's nice to have that network, and they've been very helpful to me and very supportive. I wanted to just go back around to what Council Member Turner said. The senior center next week, we're serving lunch for Thanksgiving. They are really short on volunteers, so if anyone has time, we kind of get there around 11:00 and start kind of serving drinks and stuff, so if anybody has a little extra time next Thursday, please come by the senior center, and if you want to sign up, just call Megan over at the senior center, and she'd be glad to have any volunteers that we can get.
That's Wednesday, not Thursday.
I'm sorry, Wednesday. Thanksgiving lunch on Wednesday. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kristi.
You're welcome.
That was a lot. Item D4 on our agenda tonight is a discussion regarding future Town Council Committee Liaison reports during Town Council meetings. I wanted to just talk about this a little bit. This has been on our agenda for as long as I can remember, and I'm not just, I just want to have a conversation with the council on the value of this. Do you think it's appropriate for us to take time during a business meeting to do this? Is there a better way to get this information out, through Talk of the Town, through a manager's report, or continue the status quo? I mean, you can see we have quite a lengthy list of groups that we work with. Some of them are very active, some of them are inactive, so as you see, some council members have lots to report and others have nothing. So I would just like to have, open up to conversation if we want to continue this. So I know that we had talked about it in the past and never really got anywhere with it. So does anybody have opinions, Counsel Smith?
Yeah, I enjoy hearing about some of the nonprofits and some of the, some of the organizations that we support, both financially and physically with people, so it's nice to hear about the others that I'm not too involved with, see what's going on. And sometimes something comes out of that where you say, well, I could help that, you know, I, you know. So I think it, and I think it gives the town a little insight into where we spend a lot of our time sometimes, outside of council at these things, and it's important to know that we do spend a lot of time outside of council on supporting things like the nonprofits, so it gives us a chance to kind of tell about what's going on in our community. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to add or say to that? Counsel Heiser?
I think you and I have had a conversation about this before. I very honestly don't, I, for the group, I feel like this is almost a special interests. I don't, what I don't understand is from the council bylaws or from town code, how these groups get selected. I mean, we've just heard from several other community groups, like sirens and sleigh bells that aren't represented on this list. I mean, there's other government agencies I feel like we would be better served having liaisons with, and so, and since I've been here for the one term I've been here, this list has grown by several organizations, and so I just don't understand, I feel like it would serve us better if we had a selection process for what committees are going to get reported on within council, and then also... for what committees are going to get reported on within council, and then also what items are important to the council or the town that we should be reporting back on. Because I kind of think that as you listen to the reports go across the council, it's, it's all over the place to what that person thinks might be important versus having a more uniform way that we select these groups, and then a uniform report that would be reported out from the council members on those groups that we liaise with.
I tend to agree with you. I think that's why I wanted to have an honest conversation about it. You know, I agree with Counselor Smith, there is value to reporting on these things, and some of these entities are very important to us. You know, TRACS is a very important entity. Our work with the Transit Authority and the Senior Center, but it does get off-topic and does get into special interest. So I'm just open for suggestions on how we maybe want to streamline it, or have a better method of getting that out. Counselor Phillips?
Maybe if we developed a program with the town code, that if one of us council members wants something with one of these groups that we go to, we can bring it to Annie and Talk of the Town, so it gets out to everybody, versus taking up time of the actual official business meeting of the town.
And I honestly don't know what other communities do, if they have these types of reports. Do you guys have any other thoughts?
I, you know, let me just first say, when I first started on council, I felt obligated, like I needed to report on all these groups that I liaison with. But I, in the past, quite often, have done exactly what Counselor Heiser did tonight, and said, "I have nothing to report tonight." I think we need to realize, yeah, there's no need to feel like you have to, and I didn't report on all the ones that I have responsibilities with tonight. But I don't know, I, I think there's value in what's been said. I think maybe there should be a selection process. I think that would be good, because it is somewhat special interest in that we seem to, I mean, some of them, I mean personally, I would think some of them should be on there anyway, without doubt, but some of the other ones just kind of get added, because a council member is, already does something with that group or organization. So yeah, there probably should be some process of doing that. And I don't know, I enjoy hearing, as Counselor Smith said, I enjoy hearing the differences, but perhaps there is a better way. I don't know. We could just do it through Talk of the Town or something like that. Or if there's something specific and special, we can put it on the agenda and bring it up in any council meeting to that end. I mean, so there certainly is that possibility as well.
Okay. And we do have one citizen who wants to speak to us. DJ, come on up.
DJ Wesley in the council, in the county, mayor, vice mayor, members of the council. So this part is really encouraging, because each individual has interests and plugs into the community, and it's engagement. To me, I think that a thriving community does show engagement, and you set a great example in doing that. So thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we're suggesting that we quit attending. I think it's just how we get the information and the news out to the rest of the community.
I just want to say thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so this is not, yes, Counselor Turner.
The nonprofits that I interface with, they really like this opportunity. They run businesses in some cases, and they can't come to these meetings. So if they, I go to every leader. I go to the board meetings, and the president of the board always go up and say, "I have to give a report at this week's meeting. Of the things that I've heard you talk about, what do you want me to highlight?" And I think that's pretty effective, especially with the Community Center and all this Thanksgiving activity that's going on. And speaking of the Community Center, by talking about them a month or two ago, picked up a couple new board members, still looking for a treasurer and a president sitting in the front row there. So I, that's just the way I've been operating. I think, I don't know how these nonprofits were selected, but I just remember when I got elected, the mayor tapped me on the shoulder and said, "You've got this, this, and this." And I started going to meetings, and I'm okay with that, you know. It got me out there in organizations that I normally would not have spent time. So I enjoy it. Hope we continue it. And if we have to come up with a special meeting on selections, or how we should report out, I'll support that.
Okay. All right. This is not an action item tonight. I just.
Mayor Irwin.
Oh, I'm sorry. Leslie, come on up.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm Leslie Wessel, a member of the community. Several questions just came into my mind when you started talking about this. If you think about all of the nonprofits that are on that list that you have, there's a lot of things going on in our community that you don't have to do, or you're not doing, but you're actually knowing about, so that you can report what's going on in our community. It's a lot of work. And I think these nonprofits feel really appreciative and grateful that you pay attention to what's going on, and that you appreciate what's going on. So it's, I think it's a great thing. The question I had that ran through my mind is, how do they get selected? And do you have a financial relationship with all of them, or just some of them? And is that one reason why you have these liaisons with the nonprofits? So yeah, if you have a financial relationship, you should know what's going on with those dollars. And so that's been a great thing to happen, too. So the one thing I'm noticing, though, is, this is your audience right now. Of course, this is recorded, and people can watch it at home, I think, right? And then this, I don't know how, to the extent that these comments go into the minutes. So they can read the minutes, too. But how do the citizens know that you have this relationship with these groups that are benefiting them? And is it something, when you do a verbal report, it might not give enough information to really know that there's a benefit to the community or to the council to have these? And I don't know if the council would be receptive to put it in writing, make sure it goes in, like maybe there's a corner or something of the Talk of the Town, where these reports could go in there. So that's on the Facebook page. That's available to everybody to specifically look at if they're interested. But also, I've heard about a lot of things going on tonight that I didn't know about, that I could possibly participate in or help with. And I think that's a great thing, too. So I, I like what you're doing. I think it could maybe be made better. And there are important things going on that I'm glad that you know about, and also maybe some financial responsibilities that are going on, too. So thank you for doing that, and I hope it continues in some form.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. And I think some of these initially did start out because we had some financial relationship with them. And some of those have kind of, because of our budget situation, have fallen by the wayside for now, but hopefully, we can revisit that in the future. So, okay, we'll, go ahead.
I just wanted to make, I guess, when we've had this conversation before, I think the point I'm trying to articulate is to what end. We have a list of groups that we currently liaison with. I wonder why we don't have a liaison with Pine Top Fire or Timber Mesa Fire, who provide emergency services to our community. I wonder why, if we're going to have certain groups that we work with, why don't we have somebody working with the Re-Center or sirens and sleigh bells, for example? And I think that there, to, I think Ms. Wessel's point, maybe the metric is that we have a financial relationship with that institution, and we're giving them some contribution. So that is a, that's where a council liaison gets assigned. But what I, what I struggle with a little bit, as I stated before, is how do we select these organizations, and then when, at what point, would it become overwhelming for us as council members to attend all of the nonprofit organizations in this community? Because this is not an exhaustive list of nonprofits within our community, where people are out doing work for our citizens. But for whatever reason, we have this list of organizations that we work with. And so I guess what I'm asking is, maybe we have a study session, maybe we work together to come up with some kind of metric for what are the organizations we're going to be involved in? Because every one of us are involved in organizations that we're going to be, we're involved in regardless. But I can tell you right now that every organization I'm on, or I participate in, is not represented on this list. And so I guess that's kind of where I'm coming from, is I think that putting it in Talk of the Town would be a great idea, if somebody had something to report. But quite frankly, I think business of the council is much better spent talking about a manager report, where we actually cover items that our employees have done within the town, or a financial report, where we can show the public transparently what we're doing with their money. I think that stuff is much more valuable to spend business time on than, than reports on projects from within the town, that quite frankly are very similar in nature every month that we hear them. So that's, I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
I do have a question or comment.
Counselor for no, go ahead.
And I mean, honestly, to Taber's point, or I think, you know, the title of our, of this section is Town Council Committee Liaison Reports. And then again, to what end? But I am excited that we have a hotel owner present tonight. That's really exciting for me. We have lots of hotels in our area. That honestly, those tax dollars affect us. We kind of do have a financial, you know, connection with them. And it would be, it would be neat for us to engage with them, just, and report back on monthly hotel statistics, or what's going on.
Trends.
Trends, yeah, that, that directly affect us as well, and maybe even affect our ability to help these not-for-profits, you know. And so maybe, maybe, I don't, I mean, I don't know how long we want to make that, but like, not only just focusing on the not-for-profits, but the for-profit groups for our community as well.
Well, I would like to propose that we schedule a work session, and I don't think it needs to take maybe an hour of our time. We could come in at 5:00 before one meeting, and just really hash this out, because I do think there are some entities that could drop off. Unless there's something special comes up, and then we can, by all means, go ahead and report on it. But I think we could streamline this a little bit, and have a little bit more consistency in our group. So if we'll get together and schedule something, if that's, you know, the council's, okay with that. So, okay. Thank you for your time on that one. We'll move on then to Item D5, which is pursuant to ARS, Section 38-431 03A2 and A4. The council may vote to enter into executive session. A, upon a public majority vote of the members constituting a quorum, a public body may hold an executive session for the following purpose. We're looking at three, which is discussion or consultation or legal advice with and to give direction to the attorney or attorneys of the public body. And Section 4 is discussion or consultation with the attorneys of the public body in order to consider the position and instruct its attorneys regarding the public body's position regarding contracts that are the subject of negotiation, impending or contemplated litigation, or in settlement discussions connected in order, excuse me, conducted in order to avoid or resolve litigation. The item we are going to discuss is discussion and legal action regarding lawsuit Whedon versus the town of Pine Top Lakeside.
Mayor, it's legal advice, not legal action.
Legal advice.
We're not taking a legal action on this.
Thank you, advice. I apologize. Thank you for pointing that out. What are the council's wishes? Vice Mayor?
I'd move that we go into executive session.
I second.
All those in favor, signify by using your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. There will be no more legal action taken after this conversation, so the meeting will just be adjourned when we come back out. So, thank you.